Oh, sorry. Hi, welcome to the regular meeting of the Brisbane Planning Commission Thursday, August 25th, 2016, 7:30 PM, Brisbane City Hall, 50 Park Place, Brisbane. Call to order, um, sorry, the real call please.
Commissioner Anderson?
Present.
Commissioner Doe?
Present.
Commissioner Minier?
Here.
Commissioner Parker?
Here.
Commissioner Reinhardt?
Here.
Can we have a motion to adopt the agenda, please?
I'll make a motion to adopt tonight's agenda.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Moving on to the consent calendar. Please note that items listed here as consent calendar items are considered routine and will be acted upon collectively by one motion adopting the planning department's recommendation unless a member of the public, the commission, or his staff asks to remove an item to discuss it. So prior to the motion, the chairperson will ask if anyone wishes to remove an item from the consent calendar.
Nada.
Seeing none, may I have a motion to adopt the consent calendar as presented?
Yes, I motion to adopt the consent calendar to approve the draft action minutes from July 7th and July 28th.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Moving on to oral communications. Does anyone in the audience wish to address the commission on an item not on the agenda? Okay, come on in. Yes, please.
Thank you, planning commissioners. I just want to take a moment to say that I support the draft resolution that the planning commission has created for the city council. That's all. Thank you and good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Written communications. I have Bay Area Monitor, August/September 2016, Volume 42, Number 1 Edition. Aside from this, is there anything else that we want to share? No? Okay, so that's it for written communications. Old Business. Baylands Planning of Applications, Baylands Concept Plans, Brisbane Baylands Specific Plan, General Plan Amendment Case GP-01-06, and Related Final Environmental Impact Report. Universal Paragon Corporation is applicant owners of various APNs various. Does staff have anything to say?
No, as we all recall, this item has been heard over a number of months, a number of commission meetings. You had a public hearing which was closed, the July 28th, 2016 meeting. You continued your deliberations to this evening. So with that, we'll turn it over to you for your deliberations.
So before we begin, could I just wrap up a few things that were asked at the previous, I think, public comment, public hearing we had about the recommendation that we're going to make. First, there was a question from the, from a resident of Brisbane inquiring about the bias concerning land use applications of three current planning commissioners. And as you note in the staff report, you will see that there is a memo from the city attorney responding to that. So in summary, essentially, when planning commissioners are acting as, making legislative decisions, the assumption is that they will provide an impartial response to the application. Therefore, there is no current law that's, that requires any sort of recusal from any of the current planning commissioners. Is that correct, council?
Commissioner, just to clarify, I think the issue is that nothing in the law prohibits a commissioner from expressing an opinion on a legislative matter prior to deliberating on that. So just to clarify, I think that, that's the key, yeah, that was in the memo.
So, thank you, yes, and that's at G.1.2 through G.1.3. In addition to that, there was a question about the number of residents and non-residents who came to speak pro con for housing in the Baylands. And according to the count, I believe that it was almost even. However, the majority of those who came to speak or who sent in communications to our staff indicated that the majority of the Brisbane residents do not agree with housing on the Baylands. So that's just to respond to the questions that were directly asked of the commission at the last hearing that we had. So, moving forward, does anyone want to start? I have a proposal. May I make a proposal?
Yes.
Okay, so.
Please.
So, with the immense amount of material that we had to deal with, I broke it down as simply as possible. So I made a kind of a mini-matrix for myself and I had simply three columns. One, column one is issue of land use, column two is applicant/UPC, and column three is Brisbane/BPC, meaning Brisbane Planning Commissioner. So, in doing that, I kind of summarized the key issues in terms of four areas. So, one being the basic principles of land uses, two being types of the land, types of land use, three being intensity of land use, and four being distribution of land use.
Is this material available to us?
Uh, can I? I have it on my USB. Could I? Yeah, yeah, that'd be great. So while that's being printed for the fellow commissioners, I was just going to use that as sort of a guide and a launching pad for how we, to try to consolidate the immense amount of information and the vast discussions that we've had, including all of the relevant written and verbal communication we've seen thus far. Okay, so. But before we go there, until you, we get copies, does anyone else want to start? With anything? No?
I like to wait and see what your framework is.
Okay. It's actually very simple. And then I had a couple of questions for the staff.
Actually, I would like to thank everyone who's been working on this. It's been a tremendous experience, overwhelming experience. And, you know, this has been going on a couple of years. There was the citizens group that studied this for over a year, I think. And, and then there's been the staff and Lloyd Zola's group that have worked on it. UPC's been very busy with it. All the people who have come and helped us at the meetings. I just think that I cannot commend everyone enough for their help. Without all that, I think we would have been struggling a lot more because it's such a big project. So I just wanted to thank everyone.
You beat me to it. I was going to say that for the end.
We can say it again.
Because we still have work tonight.
Say it again.
I actually had the names of the people who contributed heavily, but you already mentioned that, so there's no reason to.
Oh, right.
Sure there is.
We want to hear the names.
Well, it's good to see that we're on the same wavelength.
The heavyweights, they want to spend a lot of time, like the group that spent.
So, John, should I ask some of the questions while we wait for Julia, or should we just wait?
I would go ahead and start.
So, I had a couple of questions. When we were looking at the three tables, which were very useful, by the way, thank you, I wanted to ask for the table with the significant unavoidable impacts, where is the biological section? Is this meant to be a summary, or is this meant to be a, basically just an example, sample page of the mitigation factors there in Chapter 3?
Okay, what you have in this table shows only the significant unavoidable impacts. So where there were significant impacts that were mitigated to a level less than significant, they're not appearing on this table.
I see.
So that's why you only have the unavoidable. For biological resources, the finding was that after the remediation of the site, the grading of the site, which will essentially mean the removal of the majority of what's out there, the restoration that will occur in and around the lagoon, the restoration of the creek will yield mitigation of the impacts. Therefore, the impacts were not, would be less than significant after mitigation.
Okay, so that clarifies for me because on G.1.16, in the last paragraph, it actually includes biological resources. So I was a little confused as to why we're stating it here but not listing it there.
Yeah, it should not be listed on.
So I'm just going to cross it off my copy?
Yes. Yeah, Table 3 is taken directly out of the draft EIR.
Okay, thank you. Then I had, in, at G.1.21, the first paragraph, it says, the second sentence in expanded specific plan covering 684 and then zero acres of the Brisbane Baylands. Do you want to correct that number?
Let's see, I think you're, you're on page.
G.1.21?
21.
21.
Okay, and the concern was the?
The first paragraph, line 2, the last three words?
Acres?
First paragraph, line 2, last three words?
Okay.
Yeah?
Yep, there's a typo there.
So we want to take out zero, yeah?
684 acres.
Yeah, we want to take out zero. And then, paragraph 4, it has two provisions. I think we mean to break it off at the whereas and make it another provision?
Okay.
Okay. And I think that's it for those edits, but I do have a question about G.1.18, under hazardous materials. The EIR determined that adequate information did not exist to support approval of a specific plan. Thus mitigation measure 4.G-2A requires the remedial action plans in a Title 27 landfill closure. Is that, that's as we want it, yes? Okay, because I, we use that as a reason for.
Yeah, that's correct. The idea, the, the finding of the EIR was that essentially, there's enough to do a general plan and set up that process of the city determining land use, then the DTSC and the regional board going through the remediation of Title 27 landfill closure review, once those plans are done, then would come approval of a specific plan.
Got it. Okay. Those are it for my questions. Does anyone else have questions before we proceed? Okay.
One other change in, it's actually not the whereas, it's been the first, now therefore, the July 28th, this was written originally based on your taking an action on July 28th. So that one on the now therefore.
Oh, yes.
The planning commission at its meeting of today's date.
So it's G.1.24?
Yes.
So it will be changed to August 25th, 2016?
Right. So those would be the correct, those would be the corrections and as part of your discussion, we can discuss any other changes you would like.
Got it. Okay. So, what do we think?
Want to walk us through this?
Yeah. So, under basic principles of land use, that's found on G.1.7 through 1.9, and also on G.1.12. Basically, we determined four major principles that were concurrent with what the applicant UPC proposed. So they would be maintaining TOD, which is transit oriented, right? Then it would also be preserving and restoring habitat areas, which also, which UPC also agrees with in terms of the principles of land use. Roundhouse rehabilitation, again, it's in the application. What the application doesn't include is the concurrent provisions of infrastructure, public service with development, and relationship of land use approvals and development with site remediation. So, just based on those differences, we can see where the application stands and where the commission's interpretation of the good of Brisbane stands. Right? And then in terms of types of land use found on G.1.9 through 1.10, and also on G.1.13. In terms of the applicant's proposal, the basic plan is that there's 7 million square feet office, retail, industrial, and institutional, and the commission agrees with that to a degree, and designated light industrial and industrial areas 1, 4, 9, and 8 is simply industrial, right? The application proposes 4,434 residential units, and the commission determined that we do not want any residential units, and the reasons are found on G.1.13. And I think it bears reiteration because if we're talking about why we're doing what we're doing, I think, given the amount of information comments that we've had, I think it bears reminding that the reason we decided that was there were safety issues in relation to site contamination and remediation. The community survey overall shows that the residents here agree with the general plan and prohibit, to prohibit housing on the Baylands. And then the effects on community character resulting on physical separation of the Baylands from the other residential areas in Brisbane and the ridge. In addition to that, the municipal cost-revenue considerations that were brought up time and time again in our discussions. Then number three, the application requests 169.7 acres of open space or open area, and the commission agrees with that by placing the open space in areas 3 and 7. It may help you to look at Exhibit 1, which is G.131 through G.133. So you can actually look at the physical layout. Number four, 135.6 acres of the lagoon, and that's covered in Area 3 as per Exhibit 1. Number five, offset energy demands for, one of the things that I think the applicant's application indicates is that it wants to offset energy demands for the Baylands. However, in our discussion, the commission wants to offset energy demands for Baylands, and some or all of our city's needs. So it's a, it's a bigger, bigger goal. Number six, no recognition of potential ecology expansion in the application. However, in our discussions, we acknowledge that there is potential ecology expansion. So those types of land use as proposed by the application, in juxtaposition with the hopes and wishes of the planning commission and the recommendation, there's a, there's a slight difference there. But for the most part, many of the things such as light industrial, industrial, open space, lagoon, and energy demands to some degree are, are agreed upon. So there is, there is room, there is room for further discussion. In terms of intensity, intensity of land use found on G.1.10 and G.1.13, the application would like to see 12.1 million square feet in building area, whereas the commission is recommending 1 to 2 million square feet net increase in building area. In terms of distribution of land use, G.1.10 and G.1.13, both approaches use the same basic arrangement of potential development areas around key features. With the following differences, I suppose. So the application proposes substantially more development than the BPC recommendation. Number two, the application proposes office and industrial development areas where BPC wants to devote renewable energy generation to increase and offset the demands for some of the city or all of the city uses, in addition to the Bayland needs. And then number three, application proposes housing within the Baylands where BPC believes that there are still unresolved contingencies. So they are also, again, listed on G.1.13. So in reviewing the information that we've been given and incorporating the responses from everyone, this is where we currently stand. So, do we want to talk about other things? Or span on anything?
Well, I think what we can do is, each commissioners can say something about whatever, how they come to the certain decisions that they come up with. So that way, you know, the citizens can understand what the reasons behind recommending this particular, you know, the recommendations for the city council. So, who wants to start then?
So, so to try to avoid redundancy, is there anything in particular we want to talk about? Because some of the things are already, are already agreed upon.
What I want to do is, I want to discuss some of my thoughts as to why I agree to whatever we agreed to.
Okay.
That way, it makes it a little easier for people to understand what my thought process was.
Okay. So can we break it off into topics or everybody?
Yeah, I have the topics here, but who wants to start first? I'm always the first one to start.
You made.
How about we?
I made a list for everyone.
I will pass it on, but this is for my own.
I see.
Talking discussion when I, and then if you guys want, I can, they can make the copies for you.
So may I suggest that when you talk about one topic, you allow everyone else to chime in and then you move on to the next topic?
Yes, you can.
Okay.
You can put your two cents worth as well.
Everyone should, right?
Okay, so who wants to start now?
You have the first.
Okay. Okay. Number one issue that was always brought out was the affordable housing. Everybody talks about the affordable housing. Now we need more affordable housing, housing crisis and all that. And I think the fellow commissioner has, Anderson, has done some good work searching through the, what's the trend right now and what's going on with the affordable housing. And I think that's a part of the package, right? If you didn't get, here it maybe, they can, it's part of the package, okay.
It'll be attached to the minute.
So my approach was more simplistic. What I was thinking is, first of all, we don't know what the definition of affordable housing is. Everybody talks about it, but what is affordable housing? So let's look at the practical data here. The median price of homes in the Bay Area right now is about $1 million, you know, in general. The median price of condominium and townhouses is close to 600,000 to 700,000, okay? Should we consider that as an affordable? For, to, in order to afford that, one will need at least 300,000 to 400,000 every year of income in order to qualify for that kind of a house. Also, the rents for the single-family homes and condominium and townhouses, they are also in the range of between $4,000 to $7,000. And the reason for such an increase is because the value of the house itself, if somebody is going to purchase that, if you look at their own mortgage expenses and all that, they amount to about $3,000, $4,000 easily. So how can they afford to rent at less than that? Also, if you look at the per square foot cost of the homes nowadays, they range from $300 to $400 per square foot. So if you have a 1,000 square feet home, you're looking at 300,000 to 400,000, plus the added cost for the, for the land, also the property taxes, also the, in case of condominium, you will have the cost for the association, water, sewer, PG&E, cable cost, all of those. If you add to all of that, it comes out to a fairly significant amount. Now, I don't know whether any, any developer will be willing to sell the home less than the median value, unless there is a sub kind of a subsidy from the local jurisdiction. And I haven't heard anything on that regard, whether the city of Brisbane is going to subsidize some of these homes to make it affordable. Sometimes we use the, the approach that lets a certain percentage of the homes will be make affordable, right? So even if you take, say, 10% of the homes are affordable, that will be, according to the developer's plan, there'll be 440 homes. Are they going to make a big difference in the affordable housing market versus 4,000 homes that will be sold at the median price? So again, that, this particular subject will also be addressed at the Parkside project that we're going to look at it, as to how we're going to handle the affordable housing element. There are, I don't see there any California or federal funding to do that. Everybody says affordable housing, but what is the affordable housing? So in my mind, it doesn't, didn't make any sense to me to allow the 4,400 homes when you can, 44,000 homes, when you can have only 440 affordable homes from that we can get, even if you use the 10% criteria. So, so, and also from the fiscal analysis that were presented to us, it's very, very obvious and very clear that for the, as, when it comes to the housing, the city has to pay. City will not gain anything, it will cost the city. So the city of Brisbane residents are willing to pay for the, to have the additional housing. Based on those kind of criterias, I come up with the, with the conclusion that affordable housing in the Baylands is not possible at this point, in my opinion. And as a result, I didn't like the idea of having 44,000 homes build.
4,400.
4,400, sorry. 4,400 homes built on that particular site. So, if you compare that to the renewable energy plan, it doesn't cost, it will not cost anything to the city. And in fact, the, it will help the environment, it will generate electricity for the entire county. So that was one of the reasons I said that housing will not be inappropriate for this particular site, along with, second topic was traffic analysis. We all talk about the Geneva Extension, and we think that Geneva Extension is going to solve all the problems. If you look at it, the problem is not the Geneva, the Geneva Extension, or, is the problem is Highway 2, Freeway 280 and 101. They are up to the capacity, no matter what you do, whether you change the entrance to the freeway from one corner to the other, the problem is the freeway, and there's no way we can expand the freeway. So what are we, what we're doing here is we shifting the congestion from some of the local streets to the Geneva Extension. And to me, it didn't make any sense to consider Geneva Extension as the, as the savior for the traffic problem that we have here. Also, the general plan indicated number of, a number of crossings that are not currently within the criteria that general, general plan has, that is the service level D or or less. So with the Geneva Extension, I don't think that will make much of a difference, and in fact, it might degrade the service even more. On top of that, we have a number of developments coming up in San Francisco, Delicity and South San Francisco, there's a lot of residential development is coming up. They're also going to contribute to the congestion to 101 and 280. We also talk about the transit center. It's a good idea, transit center, everybody talk. It's a good idea, transit center, everybody talks about it. But recently, if you look at it, the Bay Area traffic transit studies, they think that as a result of their promotion for transit centers, they're really affecting their services because they don't have the money to keep up with the demand. And their rolling stock is getting old, and there are no federal fundings or state fundings at this point are available to take care of that. And we are depending on, heavily on the federal or state funding to do the Caltrain extension. It's very difficult nowadays to apply for that, because if you apply through federal highway administration or the Caltrain, there are a number of projects that are in line that have the priority. And as a result, some of these funding may take 15, 20, 30 years before we even see any money coming out of that. And there are a lot of issues with the electrification too, with the Caltrain electrification project. Number of cities, they don't like the underpass or overpass. As a result, it's going to go through a series of hearings, and it may be years before we see a high-speed train going through the, from San Francisco to San Jose. However, the maintenance yard may be a possibility, because whatever they do in interim, say, for example, San Francisco to Milbury, they extend that, they will need some facility to repair their vehicles. So, that's a near-term possibility. But as far as going through the high-speed train and also the, increase the capacity of the Caltrain service, I don't see in the near future that's going to happen. The rolling stock for the Caltrain is really, really aging. They don't have the funding to change that, and their track systems, you know, the railroad tracks have to be double-tracked many, many places in order to increase the capacity. So, we can talk about that, we're going to have a lot more service, but in order to do that, there are a lot of things that still need to be done, and it will be impossible to project at this point whether the Caltrain will be able to get all their, right away to the point where they can increase the rail service. The main constraint will be the number of cars that they can accommodate, you know, and on the spacing of the stations and all of that. So, there are a number of issues involved there, and I don't think it will be possible in the near term, or even 15, 20 years, that we will see that there will be a capacity on the Caltrain service.
Could I just interject? So, are you, have you closed off the housing discussion?
Yeah.
Okay, so, can people chime in in terms of the housing, so we can check that off?
Okay, let me finish this, and then we can combine these two, and you can...
Okay, because I'm just thinking that they're going to rehash the housing again.
Okay. We also talk about the Muni extension, and you know how long that takes?
The Muni extension?
Muni extension.
Oh, the Muni extension.
You know how long that takes to get it done? It was, Muni started planning for the Chinatown extension back in 90s, and here is 2016, and it's still not, it's still not done. And as far as the funding to extend the C-line, that may be possible, you know, all the way to Geneva. But again, C-line goes from up to the Embarcadero Center, and people who are working in the parts of this San Francisco, they still have to rely on other system, like Muni buses and all that. So, again, the commute time will be at least one to two hours to get from Baylands to the other parts of San Francisco. And how many people will be willing to do that, I don't know. So, that will be, that will be a question that should always be considered in terms of, we talk about that transit will provide the service, but it's not going to provide the service at different parts of the city. I used to work in Vactrol Corporation a number of years ago, and I remember how difficult it was to get from one place to the other, you know, especially the Muni bus system is not very reliable. So, and on top of that, if you are to go to the peninsula, it will drop you at the Caltrain stations, but from there to your offices, again, is a big problem to get there. So, this city, this area here is not geared towards the mass transit. If you look at New York and others, Boston, other states, other states like, you know, even the Washington DC, they have very good transit system, and they plan that way. So, in New York's system, you can go from point A to point B very quickly and rapidly, and there are a number of lines available, rail lines. In Bay Area, it was basically meant for the car vehicle traffic, and that was done probably purposely, or whatever the reason was, that General Motors or Ford, they wanted to sell the cars, or whatever the reason was, that we rely heavily, and we developed the suburbia. They thought that as a freeway, we can get to the Concord and all the other areas very quickly. So, as a result, we are very dependent on our vehicles. And also, if you look at it, on a point of view, that people who have the families, the kids, they rely on the public transit system, they won't be able to take their kids out of the, after the school, to the after-school program and all that. As a result, we are always going to be dependent on the car, no matter what people say. So, if you have one household, and there are three people living there, you'll at least have two or three cars. And there's no way we can get away with that, because our mindset is that. Unless and until we come up with a transit system that can bring us to all different parts of the Bay Area, it's not possible. You know, we used to have the key system here, and we decided to get rid of that. The key system went all over San Francisco and Oakland. Those days are not possible now, because in order to build one mile of the transit system, it costs in the terms of about $50,000 to $100 million. And we don't have that kind of funding available. Also, we depend on the Congress to allow, you know, distribute the money. So, depending where, who is running the transportation committee, the funds will go to that particular state.
So, are we done with the transit, so we're talking about transportation?
Yeah. Traffic analysis and transportation combined together, traffic analysis.
Okay. So, are you done with those two?
No, not done yet.
Because those are huge topics. No, no, but I'm not, I'm not stopping or requesting that you stop your analysis, but I'm saying that it's topic by topic?
Yes.
And I'm afraid we're going to lose people as we go, because you already touched on two huge issues.
Yeah.
Transportation, right, and housing.
Yeah.
So, given that we've had, housing has been such a huge issue, can we revisit that and have people chime in?
I've got two more topics on the traffic, and then I will...
I understand, but if you, if you put it to, it's going to get convoluted. So, could I have somebody, maybe Commissioner Anderson can speak to the housing factor, because he presented, just in summary, because it's here already, but...
Can I, can I finish my traffic part? I'll just have only two bullets left, because the thing is, I don't want to lose my thought process.
It's just going to get very convoluted.
Okay. So, the other item that was discussed heavily, and in fact, one of the consultants came here and said, the driverless cars will solve all the problems. Being in the Bart system and working on the automated train control system, I will think, I will say that it will make the capacity of the, in the freeways even worse. The reason is, in order to be safe, the sensors have to keep the distance between the two cars, a certain, certain distance apart. Nowadays, if the people drive on the freeway, they don't keep the recommended distance between the cars, but even then, the capacity is to the fullest level possible. If you're going to have a driverless cars, it's going to be, it will have a less capacity of the, to accommodate the number of cars we will have. Yeah, you're getting what I'm talking about? It will be a safe system probably, but it will be a slow system, in my opinion. Also, there are a number of issues with the driverless cars that need to be addressed, especially when you're changing the lanes, or there is any problems ahead of the, in the same lane, there's a problem with another car in front of it, how that's going to be managed with the driverless cars? And even the Ford said that they will not have a steering even in the driverless cars. I don't understand how that will work, but maybe the technology might solve it at some point. And degradation of level of service, we already are higher than the service level D at number of intersections. I don't think we can afford to go even more than that. So, as a result, I will say that, you know, our general plan says certain amount of the, the certain intersections have to be no more than service level D. If we allow whatever we think about, we are thinking about this, I call that a hybrid plan, or we can call it renewable energy plan, that will generate some certain number of cars, and I think what will happen is that we have to modify our general plan to accommodate that, because that will go beyond the service level D. But I will not change the general plan, I will say that we can give the variance based on the amount that's increased. So, that will give us an open-ended approach in case in future, if we decide to have some more development in the area. So, I will say that let's keep the general plan the way it is.
Okay.
Okay, now, go ahead.
So, we, so you covered quite a bit, and so we are going to have to go back and talk about the major issues here, one of which, as you identified, is housing. So, given that Commissioner Anderson has already submitted a written version of his input, perhaps he can give us a summary for those in the audience?
Yes, I actually don't want to spend a lot of time going over everything that I wrote. It will be attached to the minutes of the meeting. But basically, I expressed my opinion that it's not possible to solve the housing crisis through planning alone. We need other factors. So, the one and most important thing about the determination of whether housing is to be permitted on the bayland or not, is whether the site is suitable for building. And I think the staff report already explains the reasons behind that decision. I know the applicant is vastly disappointed with the size of the recommendation, but we are recommending something that is larger than what is permitted in the general plan when the property was purchased. And I'm sure that the process of planning and requesting for expansion of development is going to be a process that will continue for many decades, and we could have closed this evening. So, housing, this is not directly related to the baylands process, but another opinion that I had is...
Could you speak into the mic?
To compensate for not permitting housing on the baylands, I think that it's very important for Brisbane to consider other areas in town where we can increase our housing stock. We should, at a minimum, meet our RENA quotas, and we have been historically. Not every community has been, but I think that we should continue to. It's already been mentioned about the fact that often in new developments, there's an insufficient quantity of what's called affordable housing, and that affordable housing isn't always actually affordable. I think that if we could in some way get past that and solve that problem, then that would be a motivation to consider exceeding the RENA numbers, but we should only do that with very careful analysis. Many people spoke about the imminent and obvious disparity between housing and commercial and job availability, and I think that is a critical area that we're facing today. If we don't keep up with the job market on housing, then we run the risk of not meeting the basic needs of the employers, which could cause bad counter effects for the residents who are living here. And many people have spoken on the pro-housing side on this aspect. However, if we only care about that side of the equation, we have to worry about our limits to growth and our limits for resources. We already have building halting for two years in East Palo Alto due to water shortages, and I think there are other communities in the Bay Area that are having water problems. We know that during the drought, some farm areas received zero water. Their allocation was zero for the year, and they couldn't plant anything at all. If we got to the point where we could not deliver water to the taps of the houses in the area, that would be a catastrophic failure for everyone. And it may sound ludicrous to say it right now in these terms, but when you have exponential growth and a water rights system that does not guarantee delivery of water that you've paid for, you know, sometimes the water's just not there, that is a very important planning issue that we need to consider every single time. So, I think those are all of my comments related to housing, that's what we're talking about at the moment.
Commissioner Reinhardt, do you have anything to add to the housing discussion?
Well, well said. I think, I think the, you know, an alternative plan to housing on a more, well, I'd say safer site, but suitable is probably a better word, is really where we want to go. I think, you know, if you're looking at the survey, which has been mentioned many times, a lot of people in Brisbane are open to housing, a smaller amount of housing. I could see that as a potential solution, you know, less housing than proposed. But there's a lot of other factors that are still, that created holes for us, the traffic issues, you know, liquefaction, I mean, back to the safety remediation issues that people are still very hesitant about, water supply, a lot of things that are addressed in the sustainability framework, which I know we did propose it as part of the solution to kind of roll into the general plan, and I think that's a step in the right direction in terms of addressing housing. And that's about all I have to add right now.
Can I make one point regarding that?
Sure.
The housing, you mentioned that the survey said that we can have a, you know, maybe very low, or maybe a couple of hundred homes. The problem is, if you do allow the housing and you make the baylands as, you know, zoned as a residential, there is a California legislation right now that once the area is considered as a housing, you know, zoned as a housing, then we cannot stop the developer to come up with more housing in that particular area, even more than what was initially asked here. So, we have to be very, very careful if we allow even 10 homes over there, we're looking at in future, we won't be able to stop according to that particular legislation. I don't have the copy of that, but it's going to be something that we all should keep in mind, that before assigning any area as a residential, there is a possibility that we may open up a floodgate.
Oh, yeah, I was just referencing that, because it's not a black, the survey wasn't black and white. It wasn't no housing. I just wanted to mention that for the record. But I still, like Commissioner Anderson mentioned, other sites that are suitable or safer, there's a lot of other possibilities for housing in Brisbane. So, we're not, as a commission, maybe if I can speak, we're not opposed to housing in Brisbane, just in this, in this particular instance, which is a big, obviously, component and... and regulation for the developer, and we want the success, you know, of the development of the Baylands in some form. It's just, don't see housing the way it's presented as the way to go.
Commissioner Parker?
I think a lot of this has been my thought. My thought is that we don't have the infrastructure out at the Baylands. We're going to cap the land, we're going to clean it up, and then we don't really have the infrastructure. So it's going to be not affordable. There will be some housing that would be affordable, but not very much. The way I see it, living in a condominium, is that if we have housing in a condominium that is low cost, the person, and the way the laws are now, the person cannot build up equity in their low-cost housing. This is for, but they will still need to pay the market homeowners association fees, which go up every year. If there's any reconstruction, they're going to have to pay for that. They cannot pull the equity out of condominiums. And I know at this point, unless the apartment building is for low-cost housing initially and will stay low-cost housing, apartment buildings are not, at this point, you don't designate a certain percentage of apartment buildings for low-cost housing. So I just don't see this as a particular location to have housing, especially if the aim is to provide low-cost housing, affordable housing. I can imagine that this particular location is going to be able to have housing that's not going to be expensive. I think that we can find housing within Brisbane at other locations. And maintenance on new homes at this point is very high. You know, just putting in plastic pipes on land that's compressed, the land will settle, the pipes will start shearing off and breaking. And, you know, each of those repairs costs quite a bit of money, and that will be assumed by the homeowner. And if we're looking at low-cost housing, where it's going to be built on fill, I just see that as being a very expensive proposition. And who's going to step in to do it? Well, the homeowner will need to do it. If there's any problems with any type of, from what I understand, if there's new problems and DTSC or Regional Board Water Quality finds new contaminants somewhere down the road, that will be, need to be paid by the homeowners. And, so I don't see that low-cost housing, this is a particularly good place to put low-cost housing. I don't see it in an area that is established, has infrastructure, and we do have those places in Brisbane, so we can put the housing there. I just think that if we're looking at high-end housing, that's one thing, but we're not. I mean, people are asking for affordable housing. Let's find areas where we can have affordable housing that has a reasonable chance of succeeding. And that's my thinking. So, and I appreciate all the information about the traffic, because I'm not an expert, and that's not my field of study. So I really thank you, and I don't have much more to say on that. So...
I want to say one more thing about the housing element. The housing element, they come up with requirements for each city to meet certain number of homes to be built, but the irony of the matter is, is not enforceable. And sometimes the numbers that they come up with is not based on the actual conditions at the particular city. It's based on the regional air quality monitoring and traffic and all of their other factors. As a result, being on the Planning Commission for that many years, I've seen that almost every single year, we've probably not been able to build, to build, to meet the housing element requirements, and there is no penalty or anything involved there. So if somebody says that we must build that because the housing element says, you know, we have to meet the housing element requirements, there is no such thing. It's, seems like it's a voluntary thing, because last few years, we had like 170, 182 homes to be built, and we built maybe close to 60 or less, even that. So that whole criteria that they use for the housing element is really not based on the local conditions, but like overall regional needs. So I just want to make that point, that we don't have the obligation per se to, we must build those homes to meet the housing element requirements.
So aside from our discussion on the housing that involved the desire for us to use the Baylands in the most optimal way, and to clearly state that the commission in Brisbane itself is not against building, but that we do it in a way that we feel and we find sustainable by our residents, because in the end, the people here are going to be the most impacted, and the people here have to sustain that, the people here have to develop those relationships. So we do that through, again, the RHNA requirements and element, and we're doing it, we're working with the park side to develop housing there. In addition to that, my major thing was that I find it a public health concern. I'm very, very, very worried about that. That is my biggest thing. And when we asked for comparable sites, we were given several. However, none of them came to the level of contamination that I feel the Baylands is at. Undocumented, unregulated for close to 100 years. The closest, I think, case study we had was Watergate, and I did a little bit more digging, and I found a particularly unsettling piece of information that was authored by Alison Pape, and if I could have my USB. And it's entitled "A Question of Settlement: Emeryville's Landfill Problems." Thank you. And so in it, she discusses the issues with landfill and how, in the last half-century, because of the population and economic growth, there's been a demand for housing, and most especially affordable housing. And again, I'm not going to rehash what my fellow commissioners have already said about affordable housing. I think it's beyond what we can do, even with the Baylands. Assuming we were to agree to the 4,400 homes, it still would not address the affordable housing issue. In addition to that, we have very, very real issues of public health and safety hazards that are, at least to my level of comfort, have not been addressed. And that's just something that, having had a new addition to my family, I wouldn't want to live there. I cannot in good conscience place someone out there. So, again, I refer you to this piece by Alison Pape, and I have it here. We can add that to the list of written documentation here, just to verify that the commission does really want this project to work. It really does. However, it can't do it without the sustainability portion, without the public health and safety issues being addressed, in addition to the traffic and so on, and so on, and so on. So after those evaluations in terms of housing, I felt compelled to make, come to the determination I have.
What's your find?
Excuse me?
I will add one more thing to what you said. We tried to get the history of, you know, those projects that were built on the landfill, and we were looking for something in the order of 10 years or more, and I don't think we were able to get that.
One.
Watergate was the closest.
Maybe one, I think.
Yeah.
And majority of the projects, they're still, we don't have the results as to what happens after a long time, long period. So I think only one was the 10 years.
Watergate was 30 years, and I believe there was a claim that one of the Mission Bay buildings was 16 years. But my biggest problem with the material that we received was that they were more brochure-level.
Yes.
And I didn't really feel like we were presented with...
There was no detail in study. That was our results where it's discussed here.
So can I just read a quick portion? The author states, "In my opinion, the landfill has been an overlooked part of the problems occurring at Watergate. The lawsuit presently in litigation examines only the inadequacy of the building construction while ignoring the effects of the mismanaged landfill."
And this was what year, do you think?
Oh, I'm sorry, I don't have that.
Oh, okay.
"Due to the variability in fill consistency, bay mud depth, settlement acceleration processes used and time allowed for primary settlement, it would be very difficult to allow for these differential settlements in construction of the buildings. The developers should have excavated the fill and replaced it with monitored clean fill or waited another year to complete the entire process of fill surcharging over the entire recent pond fill area." So the author, I think this is a nine-page article.
I was going to explain that to you individually and the geotechnical issues and all that.
Yeah, so she covers construction, geology, methods. So that would, that would really help us to clarify some of the health and public safety concerns that were touched on but not really fully addressed. And even then, this article does not fully address it. It's just one of the articles that I discovered that really convinced me to think about the public and health and safety concerns out there. Okay, so moving...
The bottom line is that these are not affordable housing. We're not talking about affordable housing, 4,400 homes. There's no possible way, so...
Well, yes, that's key to it, but for me, the public health and safety issues are my main concern.
In order to say that this is an affordable housing is misnomer. It's clearly not correct.
So that's just one of the housing sub-issues. So we were, I think Commissioner Mameer mentioned the Geneva Station transportation traffic, so does anyone want to add any more to that? No?
I can spend the whole evening discussing all the traffic.
I think you said you shared enough.
We want to move on.
Okay, so aside from that, were there any other major issues?
I'm going to go over my rest of the items, if you want.
Which, can you tell me what's on there?
Okay, the other one was the water availability, and I think you touched upon that a little bit.
Okay, water, and what else? So I just made my list.
And then the geotechnical issues. Then I was going to talk about the hazardous material management, and I was talking about the fiscal impact to the city, and then gasoline tank farm, what kind of issues that we may have to still address. And I was also going to talk about the air pollution.
Tank farm.
So...
Okay. The first one is...
So before we get to that, does anyone want to address any of these issues first? To kind of like shift the discussion a little bit? Anyone want to tackle one?
I'm sort of confused about the order we're doing things in, and I would be happy to let Commissioner Mameer go on another roll.
Okay, so... Yeah, so when we talk about water, can we stop there so other people can...
Sure.
...mean about water? Because before you said yes, and then we went through three major issues before we got to say anything else.
Two major issues, but, okay.
Actually, three.
Anyhow, the next topic I want to discuss is the water availability. And there was, some of the commissioners already mentioned that, the problems with the, you know, water availability of the water. We tried to get some information about how the water will be supplied at this particular site. And we were given a lot of documents back and forth with the Modesto Irrigation Authority, and none of them had the firm commitment as to whether the water will be available or not. And unless and until we have the firm commitment, and, you know, these are all water rights, actually, and I don't know whether they can be revoked at any time or not, but we were unable to get the final document addressed that, yes, you will have this much amount of water. We don't have that, then we assume that at this point, the water availability is not been fully explored. Also, when it comes to the, also when it comes to the availability of the water from the Modesto Irrigation Authority, there is also concern by the Sierra Club, the effect on the, impact on the San Joaquin River. And there's possibility that there might be a lawsuit, and this may drag on for a very long time. So even if we have the agreement with the Modesto Irrigation Authority, that particular lawsuit has to be, you know, covered. And I think at this point, Sierra Club is not in favor of any more water getting from the San Joaquin River. So that's a big, big, major issue at our point, and I think I will suggest that the city council, before they make any further deliberation on this, should really look at the availability of the water. As Commissioner Anderson mentioned, that the East Palo Alto has already stopped any kind of development, residential development, due to the lack of water. And I think it's the same thing that I heard about San Jose, City of San Jose, is also considering that. So there will be, this is what we call a critical path. In order to do this project, first and most essential thing will be the water. If you don't have that, then I don't think we proceed with this particular project, because everything starts there. And in engineering term, we call that a critical path analysis. So before you start any project, you look at the, what's my, the most critical thing that I had to get in place first? And water will be the first thing that need to be there in order to proceed with any kind of development. So this is my take on the water, if anybody wants to...
Yeah, does anyone have any input on the water, or additional input?
I think that the staff report already covers the water very well. In my written comments, I did have a couple of comments on that for the staff report, although my comments are actually redundant, but I just wanted to emphasize how important the water is, and we should really put in words about that. The other concerns I have about water is that East Palo Alto is one of the poor communities, and as we are getting into, you know, thinking about the whole Bay Area as a unit, as water becomes more expensive, it's the more expensive developments that are going to be better equipped to afford the water. And I really hope that on a state level, something is done to address this, because otherwise, it will really explode the affordable housing issue.
Yes, definitely.
And just to reiterate the fact that water supply is also on our table three significant underwater impact list, it's the last issue. So it is a recognized issue, it's been studied, but again, that's something that we need to consider when we talk about developing the Baylands.
The other thing regarding the water I'll mention is the location of the water tank, the supply line. And that was not fully discussed in the hearings. It will be critical as to where they're going to put the water tank, because there is a, you know, Bayshore Boulevard going in between, and it's going to be a huge cost, upfront cost to build such a system. So one of the beauty about the renewable energy project, the alternate, is that it will provide sufficient energy, renewable energy, to put the water tank at site somewhere.
I think it has to be...
That's possible.
But the water has, the tank has higher...
Pumps, you have to, you use the pumps for that particular purpose, and the pumps run on the electric city, and the electric city is generated by the renewable energy.
The water goes down.
Pumps will pump the water any height you want.
All right.
Right? No? So water availability is a key... So, water availability is a, is a key, key point here. And it's the, without that, I don't think that the project is viable until and unless we come up with a firm commitment for the water. Okay? Do you want me to go with the next one now, or what?
Let's go on to geotechnical.
Next one is the geotechnical issues. There was some geotechnical work done on the, on the project, but in my opinion, it was not sufficient. Even though the project said it was a specific plan, but it's the investigation that was done was not that, you know, specific in terms of the areas where, several areas that were not analyzed properly. And, and the important part about these geotechnical issues is we need to know the soil profile, how the soil is distributed, and what type of layers of soil we have here. And we got the rough idea of that, but it may vary because of the size, the size of the, the project area, that you may have several different types of soil profiles. Some places you have sandy soils, some places you may have clay soils and all of that. And also the distribution.
Clays. Two layers of clays.
Yeah. And on, and on top of that, you have all this hazardous material, layers that are there. And it's very important to know that upfront, because the reason is that you want to avoid the areas of intensive drilling or pile driving in the areas where there are possibilities of, where there are, you know, those hazardous materials there in that, that particular location. So, that may not be suitable for certain type of development. Also, it's very important to find out the liquefaction potential for, throughout the, throughout the site. And there was, there was a question asked to the consultant regarding that, can the, can the upper layer, protective layer that we're going to put, can that crack and, and release the hazardous material? The answer was that may, that it will not. But without doing a proper analysis, I will say, that answer was not appropriate at this point, because there was not enough analysis to do that. Liquefaction potential depends on the thickness of the liquefying layer. So, if you have a thin layer, then you will get the dip, if it, in case if it liquefies. But if you have a thicker layer, you will get, definitely get the sinkhole. So, in order to decide whether you're going to have or not, you need to have a careful analysis or geotechnical analysis, which we've not done yet. And there is a potential that you may get, may develop the sinkholes in certain areas. Again, the beauty of the, the renewable energy alternate, that we don't have to worry too much about those, those things. Because the, the solar farm will not require that extensive dredging or extensive drilling. So, it was one other, other point that I had in my mind when I was still looking at the alternates and which one is the best one. And I thought that the, the renewable energy plan will have very least amount of effect on the, in terms of the geotechnical. Also, the, one has to determine the fluctuation of the water table, because as you know, that during the tide, high and low tide, the water table changes. And every time it changes, it, it causes the soils to, to do what we call compaction. And that has to be studied in, in any of the areas where you will have that. And also the depth of the bedrock, how far we're going to drill in those areas. Because some of the, you know, the industrial buildings that we're going to have, that has to go all the way to the bedrock. And that might be, you know, 100 feet or 200 feet or more. So, that has to be determined before we say that we're going to put certain type of structures here. And, and on top of that, the piling impact, what will that cause in terms of the, the surrounding soil characteristics, as well as, as you know, the, the noise generated from the piling? And I think there were a lot of concerns regarding the piling during the, during the time. And if you have the bigger structures, you have to drill and drive the pile even deeper. So, during the, during the hearings, we will, we ask, some of the, some of the questions were raised regarding, are there any particular methods or, or type of, type of pile driving methods or, or equipments that can reduce the sound? And I don't think we were able to get any clear answer as to whether that is or not. So, that's another issue that need to be addressed thoroughly in the specific plan. At this point, the, the, the plan that we are considering, which is the, the renewable energy plan, is more or less a concept plan. If you want to go to this step number two, then we have to think about all these different things in the specific plan. And that's why I'm bringing it up right now. So, that's the geotechnical concerns. But they, they're also related to, to the distribution of hazardous material. Because every time you do any kind of activity like that, you are disturbing the, the native soil. And that can not only distribute in the air, but also the, into the water. And how that's going to affect the marine life. And there were number of, a number of citizens, they come up with questions regarding that. And I think there is a lot more research, a lot more information needed in terms of how the, how these chemicals will be leached into, into the estuaries and, and the water. How, pardon me? Yeah.
So.
So, that, that particular aspect will be, also be part of the specific plan that need to be addressed very, very carefully. And also, there was some concern about the mercury and, and the radioactive materials. As you know, the radioactive materials takes very long time to deteriorate. So, I don't know whether there are, there are any such materials available here, I mean, are there in that particular soil. But that need to be addressed at some point, that to relieve the fear that there might be some radioactive material in the soil there. So, any questions, I'm more than happy to elaborate.
Anyone else want to add to the geologic, the geotechnical and also the hazardous materials?
I think the staff report and the DEIR very well, you know, covered what we have to go over.
Yeah.
My one comment on the staff report is that the section on a pile driving study was listed as something that would be optionally done if the city council planned on approving a higher density than we were recommending. And I think that pile driving will likely be done in any scenario, so that.
Even 2 million, 2 million square feet of industrial, you will have the file driving. So, it has to be done.
Yeah.
For that state.
Exactly. And then also related to our current conversation, although not directly, about geotechnical, is I had a comment on section 31C about the EIR approval process. And my comment there was that, you know, for the avoidance of doubt, the EIR mitigation measure revision that's mentioned is also going to include the comprehensive line item review of the mitigation measures, because we have not done a review of the individual mitigation measures at this time. And that's going to happen after the specific land use is approved by the planning. And I think that section should be a little more specific. I get a lot of questions about that when approval of the EIR comes up on the agenda. Again, we're in the process of, of that, and actual approval will happen later.
I think we also have to look at the soil disturbance due to the construction activity. And there was a little, there was a little bit of that was discussed in terms of the air pollution. But the concern is how that will be in terms of the hazardous material.
Yeah, yeah, the DEIR does say that.
Yeah, little bit.
Oil control must be done. But I, I agree that we have to examine exactly what the, the control plan is once we get into the specific.
Right. So, can I move on to my next topic?
Does anyone else want to add to the geotechnical hazardous conversation?
Nope. Good.
So, I, I think that when we're talking about the soils, my understanding is that much of the San Francisco Bay is a landfill that is based on bay mud. So, there are different types of bay muds, and there are different types of settlement issues and sedimentary issues. So, when we're considering that, that is something that should be a part of the soil analysis as well. And.
Bay mud is a very common thing in the Bay Area.
Yes.
And I think depending on the, on the characteristics of the bay mud will affect the settlement of the particular location that.
Right. And so, we need to consider that. And also, the type of waste, again, we, we've said this before, the type of waste that's in the Baylands has been unregulated, and a portion of it, or good portion of it, has been undocumented. So, we don't even know what's really out there. And to have that mix over 100 years, what's the projection in terms of, oh, how do we take remediate, remediation measures? How do we use that in order to gauge and to prevent other types of unforeseen or unknown at this point consequences? So, that is something that we really need to think about very carefully before we move on.
Okay.
In terms of any recommendation that's beyond the 1 point, 1 to 2 million. But even then, I do want to reiterate that I agree that we need to have a soil study, depending upon what the city council finds in the end. And also, we need to have a pile driving study of some sort done regardless, because there is going to be some pile driving, even at the level that we have recommended.
Well, it's, it's obvious that we need to have, in this particular type of situation here in this, in this area, even if you build five-story building, you need to have the pile driving done.
Yeah.
Because there isn't, so, I don't think that, we should eliminate that part, that, that unless the intensity of the development is increased, that we require the pile driving. I think it should be required, pile driving study should be required now.
Section 3.
Even with the 1 to 2 million square feet.
1.1.
So, we, we should change that recommendation.
Let me go back to that one.
You get that, John?
Section 32A.
Yeah. Through, through the chair, certainly what you might want to consider is, I mean, this has been a good discussion, but, you know, you have a resolution in front of you. I think Commissioner Anderson had to get some comments, which are very specific recommendations to change the resolution that you will be potentially adopting. You might want to entertain considering a motion to approve the recommendation, a resolution, and then you can frame your suggestions and comments as modifications to the recommendation that's in front of you, as opposed to, I mean, this is great general discussion, but it's not, you know, to the point of what you actually want incorporated into the resolution, but it'd be very helpful for everybody.
Yeah.
I agree with staff. We should focus on what needs to be changed with the resolution in front of us.
Yep. So, let's make a motion to go ahead and adopt it.
Yeah, I'm not done yet. I still have some.
You, you can still speak to it. The motion be on the floor, and you'll be speaking to the, to the.
Because I have some other three, three more things.
Understand.
Right, right. But we can still go ahead and adopt it. And then we can discuss it as an amendment. Is that correct?
The idea would not, not be to adopt it yet. The idea would make a motion a second for approval of the resolution. Then your discussion would focus on what changes do you want to make to that resolution? So, you would not be taking an action till you're done with making whatever changes to this resolution you would desire to make.
So, may I have a motion to do so?
Well, I've already been through most of my items. I have a couple of more that I should mention, but I can agree with the process.
If we have, I think that it would be better to go through all the concerns and then.
Well, you can speak to the motion is why.
We can do that either way. It's okay with me.
Can we do, can someone make that motion?
Okay, I make.
The chair, I can't make.
I make a motion to adopt the resolution as stated in staff's report.
Okay, a second.
I second that subject to our amendments and.
Yes.
Yes.
An ongoing discussion. Okay.
Okay, so, am I allowed to go to the next one?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
No, don't, don't vote yet.
Don't vote yet.
Don't vote yet.
Okay.
We're actually just speaking to the motion.
What you should be doing is put a motion on the table.
Okay.
Then you will be discussing that motion. So.
I see.
Whatever thing you just did was not a vote on that motion.
No, it's just putting the motion on the floor, correct?
That makes more sense than what I thought you said before.
Exactly. Discuss the motion, and then we can address some of the issues as, as you walk through, whatever changes you want to make and the issues that you've raised. Because I think a lot of the issues that you've raised are already addressed in that resolution.
Okay.
Okay. Can I speak?
So, please do.
What I see missing is that, I think we all agreed at one point that we wanted to have an oversight committee to, for the whole Baylands. Something that, I don't know what we would call it, but it would be kind of a board or something to kind of oversee the whole Baylands as one group. Does anyone remember any of this conversation?
No.
Yes, I actually do.
Yeah, I think so.
Is it, is it addressed here, Carolyn?
Well, that's what.
G127 is section 3. G127, section 3, 1C.
Let me see if it's.
The mitigation monitoring and reporting program.
Let's see, I'm not sure if it's the same thing.
So, we have, you're thinking a larger overall oversight committee?
Here, pass that over. Can't seem to find it. No, I don't think that's the same thing. I mean, what were we calling it? A, trying to remember, something. It was called.
I, I, I think what you're trying to think, remember back to.
Melrose or something?
No, no.
No.
It was, it was not a discussion of the commission, but several members, a couple of members of the public spoke to the desire, in some of your letters, establishment of an oversight committee to review it focused on the hazardous materials remediation.
And that's what I was thinking of when we were talking about that.
And is it different than BB CAG?
It may have come from members.
It would be different than BBCAG, because BBCAG is under the auspices of DTSC, where a lot of this is Regional Water Quality Board. So, I think we would need to have something ongoing.
So, in, in that case, and there was a recommendation or a request from a member of the public regarding an oversight group essentially.
Right.
To over.
It's Clara Johnson.
To essentially review the mitigation, implementation of mitigation.
Right.
So, if you wanted to add a recommendation for establishment, for council to establish an oversight committee to review implementation of mitigation measures, I think that covers.
Right.
Where you're heading, or that covers at least.
Because DTSC, you know, extends only a short amount of the, of the Baylands. And Regional Water Quality Board, you know, has quite a bit of it.
Yeah, when I, so, I, I think, you know, given what I remember of, of the previous discussion, the recommendation then would be for establishment of an oversight committee to review implementation of mitigation measures. That would include implementation of hazardous materials mitigation measures. And I think that was the request actually made to the commission during the public.
Correct. And I, I think we need to have that. How does everyone else feel?
Well, I, I'd like a little bit of clarification on exactly what the oversight committee would do and, and what their responsibilities would be. Because my understanding is that it's DTSC and the.
They don't talk to each other. One thing I found out from BBCAG is that DTSC and Regional Quality Water Board and the Bay Group are independent, and there's not very much interactions between them.
That, that might be true, but that's not the point I'm speaking to.
Okay.
The point I'm speaking to is that, you know, whichever agency is in charge is the one that's going to be enforcing. that's going to be enforcing and recommending and so on, and so I'm wondering.
But I think, you know, if you have five, six different arms of a group and we're dealing with an area that has a lot of moving components and a lot of toxins, you know, and they don't really talk to each other, then I think we should have an oversight board for this baylands. Something that.
Could we please have staff add?
Yeah, could we have staff interject a little bit?
Well, I guess if your point is you want to, again, the BB CAG is a creation of state law.
Right.
State law creates that ability in the city to, and citizens to request to form a CAG, so.
But that's under the auspices of DTSC.
Of state law. So you cannot really, the city cannot impose yourself on a regional agency.
Right.
You can't say, we're going to create a regular, we're going to create an oversight board for your activities.
Okay, I take that back.
So that's, that's a little bit, I'm a little confused what you're trying to achieve here. So if you want to do that, that's probably outside your legal realm. If you want the council to create some sort of oversight board for its own internal sort of authority, if you want to make that recommendation to the council, whether it's on hazards or mitigation measures in general or whatever, that's a recommendation you can make to the council.
But the authority.
But the thing is, the city will have its, their own particular staffs looking overseeing that, like you'll have a project manager who will be responsible for looking at the entire project, but wouldn't be.
In terms of, if this project were to move forward with, yes, there'd be, there'd be a raft of staff consultants.
Consultants and all that.
People reviewing these mitigation monitor, these mitigation measures, verifying their enforcement, compliance, et cetera. That's part of doing, that's the course of regular business, yes.
Yeah, so do you need on top of that another body?
There was not a recommendation of the city staff to.
Well, I'm bringing it up for the board to, for the planning commission to think about.
So who would be on this oversight committee?
Well, that's. That would have to be decided somehow.
I would suggest you would make the recommendation to the council and not try to create a structure to that body or.
Right.
If you want to make the recommendation to the council.
I'm just trying to understand the need for one and who would be involved and what would be the benefit. So, I mean, I.
Well, one thing I found from going to the BBCAG meetings is that when the different groups got together at our meetings to talk, there really wasn't much communication between the groups. You know, the Bay, Clean Bay Group, the DTSC, the Regional Water Quality, I mean, there's just several groups, but they don't really interact, you know, and then there's traffic. And so I was thinking that this is a big project. This is a big, maybe there's a way to create some kind of a group that would be able to, I don't know, is this planning department? I don't know where it would be.
That's back to my original point that, you know, we can form any sort of committee we want, but if it's not associated with the appropriate authority, then it wouldn't really have anything to do.
There's no oversight.
And also those, also those people on the board have to be, have to have a knowledge to see what they're looking at.
Mm-hmm.
They cannot just be, you know, so I think it's not, I'm not in favor of that at this point.
Yeah, I don't understand what objectives we could achieve, and until I do, I don't feel like we should make a recommendation.
Yeah, and I feel that having a mitigation monitoring and reporting program, that's, that serves that purpose for me, so I don't see a need to create an additional body.
Okay, do you want me to go through the rest of my stuff here or?
Okay, so geotechnical hazardous, are we on fiscal impact?
No, I still have the gasoline tank farm as much.
Okay.
To address that.
Go ahead with the gasoline tank farm.
Okay. The gasoline tank farm was not really analyzed in this EIR to the extent that it should have been. And first and foremost, we need to have the containment structure in case of leakage or any kind of vandalism or any kind of an attack to those gasoline tanks. So we need to figure out, and since we're going to have some development there, we need to have a good containment structure to contain all that flammable liquid. We also have to do the flammable plume analysis. That means when the, when the tank is burst, it will have the plume of flammable gas traveling. And how far that's going to go, that has to be the neutral zone to keep it such a way that it doesn't impact that particular people, you know, people living or people are in that area. So that analysis was not done, and I think it's very important, whatever we do, we need to do that because this day and age when there's so much going on in terms of terrorist attacks and all that, who knows what can happen to our gasoline tank? So we need to have a contingency plan and figure out how much buffer zone we should have. And that's very important. We also need to know the distribution of the, you know, the gas lines. I didn't get very good information about that as to how they go underneath the baylands and what's the condition of that, and also is there any gases leaching through that or not? So that will be a part of, again, a specific plan recommendation that we should look very carefully. And there are models available that can do the plume analysis for flammable gas. We done it in, for the liquefied natural gas, I did it myself. So there are those type of analysis available to show you how, what will be the buffer zone we should keep. Any questions on that?
Anything to add?
Okay, now move on to the air pollution. The air pollution study was really based on the regional effect on the air pollution. It didn't cover any of the at-site conditions, what will happen at the at-site. And I probably indicated earlier also that we need to run some kind of a model to show that there will not be inversion layer during the time and the construction going on. So we need to run that particular model for the, at the site. Okay, any questions on that?
Yes, what do you mean? So are you saying that, what you're saying is that during periods of inversion layer, then the construction stop?
Well, we are.
And that's.
Not only the inversion layers, but in general, during the construction as well as after the construction, you know, there is, there is amount of air pollution that exceeds, then there are some restrictions you have to make, like save the air day, stuff like that. So we need to know that the amount of, you know, the development we're doing that can trigger that type of situation at the site.
I see.
And that will be hazardous to the people working there, you know? So that particular, you know, that will also determine what type of industries can go, can be located at that particular site. Because some will generate less, you know, the greenhouse gases than the other, you know? Get it? Okay.
So are we moving to fiscal impact?
Then the next one I'm talking about is the rise of the seawater.
Oh, okay.
And again, that should be addressed properly in the specific plan as to how to prevent that and what type of predictions we have in terms of the, you know, rising of the sea. I know that some of the countries have already started building the seawalls, and is it practical to build here? But there must be some, there got to be some analysis to be done to show that, what is the possibility of that? Like in terms of the flooding, we look at 100 years flood, we can look at the same, along the same line as to what will happen with the rise of the sea. Okay, sustainability requirements, I think we all agree that this particular project must meet Brisbane Sustainability Guidelines. So now I'm going to just fiscal impacts. For this particular project, we will, we have to look at the maintenance and upkeep cost for the infrastructures, that is, roads, water delivery system, et cetera, police and emergency services, city hall staffing, public works, city staff consultants and so on. And if you look at the fiscal numbers that were submitted to us, it was very clear that the, if you allow the residential element, the city will, it will cost the city. So whatever the analysis we, whatever project, I mean, whatever the city council agreed to, I think the important part will be the fiscal impact analysis. And I was frankly not very satisfied with the fiscal analysis that was submitted to us. There were a number of things that were missing and a number of things that Ms. Miller also mentioned about the long-term costs related to the, you know, the hazards that we created as a result of this particular project, you know? So for the, it's very important that the specific plan, we should address that. And finally, I will summarize why I went, I agreed to the renewable energy alternate. I call that a hybrid alternate also. This particular alternate will have the least environmental impact, and it's very obvious through the, through all the public hearings as well as the consultants, you know, insight into that. It will also reduce the greenhouse gases. It will provide clean energy to Brisbane as well as St. Matilda County. It will also have the particular plant, we also, including the ecology extension to that and also the high-speed well maintenance area. And I think maximum height we agreed to was five-story or less. Am I correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And also the green belt along the 101 side, which will really be a good idea in that particular part, we all agreed that there should be some kind of a buffer between the 101 and the rest of the site. And also, this particular project will have the least effect on the windsurfing.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else like to add anything?
If you don't mind, I'd like to take five minutes break.
Let's see if anyone else wants to add anything. Yeah?
On the bayland resolutions, I have a couple more minor things that are already in writing, but I think I should probably go over them to see if there's agreement or disagreement.
Yes, please.
Can we do that in a couple of minutes before the break?
Yeah, just a couple of minutes.
Yeah, my first point was about an economic feasibility study. The recommendation we made was based on the understanding that NREL, NREL study found a mixed use of renewables and some other uses to be technically and environmentally feasible. The applicant has expressed some doubt over this, and I think he has every right to do that, and I think that it probably is implicit, but we should say very specifically that, you know, any plan needs further financial analysis to make sure that what we're recommending is in fact feasible.
Agreed. Is that agreed with everyone? So that you check off?
Yes.
So agreed.
Yes.
Yeah. Section 2.2, please explicitly note that the outdated zoning designations on the land use map must also be updated to conform with the general plan. I believe that's implicit.
Yes, definitely.
To specifically say it.
Yes.
So going to section 2.3, point C, point 2, 2I, I wanted to ask staff if that was, this prohibition was because of the biological preservation that was something that was addressed in the mitigation factors, as a mitigation factor, is that why?
Could you give me that question again?
I think she's jumped ahead to the next thing that I haven't read yet.
No, section 2.3, point C, point 2.
Yeah, that was what I was about to read, but I haven't read it yet.
Oh, okay, go ahead and read it.
Yeah, the section she's referring to is that I didn't believe that we said that recreation on the lagoon should be more prohibited or pursued as an option either way, and the comments in the staff report said it should be prohibited, and I didn't remember specifically making that recommendation. I thought that we were just leaving it open until someone actually made a recommendation to go one way or the other. That's a minor point, but.
So my question is, isn't that prohibition as a result, a direct result of the desire to have, to promote biological preservation as presented in one of the mitigation factors?
What I would suggest is you have a mitigation measure related to protecting the biological resources in the EIR, and actually in that section, 3.3, 3.3, point 2, you could delete that bullet point and the mitigation measure would kick in. So if it were later demonstrated that you could in fact have on-water recreation that would be protective of the biological resources, that would be fine. I think that gets at both what Commissioner Anderson is at and the restriction that you're talking about. So that bullet point could be deleted.
So I would, I would prefer that be deleted.
And then I only have one more item, and that was related to the issue of the wind The staff report said that a computer model should be, we should undertake it, but there was some doubt as to whether a computer model would actually reveal any data that would be of use to us, so I think we should change that word to consider or evaluate because I don't think we're at the point where we necessarily want to recommend that that study definitely be done unless we think that there might actually be some value in doing it later.
So we can, another way to do is undertake additional studies of impacts of future development as needed. So that's another way to deal with it, too.
If I could, I think what Commissioner Anderson is suggesting is the way that that one reads right now is it says undertake additional studies, and it would say consider additional studies.
Yeah, I just want it to strike the word undertake.
Right, so we would replace that with the word consider.
Right.
And if you go through all of these, then.
Either or.
Back from the break, I'll have wording for you and.
Yeah.
We can run through it, and then I can also walk through some of the other concerns that you've raised, and we can determine whether those are in fact already addressed.
Yeah, either or works for me. Either way.
Okay.
And those are the only comments that I have with the staff report.
Yeah. Anyone else?
One thing we had to do is.
No, okay.
One of our tasks.
Can I ask Commissioner Parker, do you have anything else to add?
No.
Okay, thank you.
One thing we had to do is to recommend the city council whether we approve this particular EIR or not. The EIR in this particular case was done for the specific alternates, and now we changed that to the renewable energy alternate. But with the minor modification, we can also, you know, we can certify the EIR if we do some minor modifications to the, what existing EIR is, and that will be used as a concept level plan for environmentally, you know, renewable energy alternate. So we need to make that recommendation.
I think staff has something to add.
Well, it's reflected in section 3 of the draft resolution, so that would be, it's already in there.
Yeah.
Because that was our responsibility to approve the EIR or not. And also, one more thing I want to add is allow variance for the level of service at this particular.
You really can't allow the city attorney, variance in a general, those are two different sort of process.
I don't know whether we can do it in this particular proceedings or not.
Yeah, I mean, the general plan is sort of the overarching planning document for the city, and it has numerous policies and, you know, subsequent, you know, other developments have to be consistent with the general plan, so you're always making findings of consistency. So there's not really a process to allow for a variance from a particular general plan policy. It's more an issue of, you know, finding whether a project is consistent.
But the thing is, how are we going to handle this in this particular case? We have to change the general plan language because one way or the other is going to be exceeding the service level D that's specified in general plan.
Is one of the.
We can, if you still want to take that five-minute break or whatever, we can address that as well on the return.
Okay, let's take the five-minute break. Thank you. Thank you.